Good evening, everyone. Thank you. This is the planning board of the city of Springfield. It's our Wednesday, February sixteenth meeting. Phil, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele?
Here.
Chris Moran?
Here.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yeah.
Mr. Florian? Miss McQuade?
Here.
And Miss Choi? I believe is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, we have minutes from December first, two thousand and twenty-one. If the board reviewed the minutes, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes from December first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Leo, was that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Phil, do you want to do roll call again?
Voting to approve the minutes, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Uh, Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Miss Choi absent. Just quickly, again, I'm just gonna run down, uh, for those who may be watching for the first time due to these Zoom requirements of these meetings. The planning board is holding all meetings in a two-part process. All new items tonight will be heard by the planning board. They will have an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, but the item will not be voted on tonight. It will be continued until the following meeting. Tomorrow, this meeting will be aired on Focus Springfield, uh, which will allow anybody with interest in the meeting to view it. And then provide comments either by email or phone. Um, if any comments are received at the, at the following meeting, those comments will be read into the record and then those items would be voted on. Tonight, under public hearing, I just wanted to jump down real quick to a couple of them that I'm gonna ask to be continued again. Specifically, the zone change number three, two, two, seven for nine fourteen Boston Road. Attorney Malick is here on another matter, but he has indicated to me that they're still working on the plans for that particular development. So he's asking that this be continued again until the, I believe it's the March second hearing.
Do you have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
A second.
So voting to continue zone change number three, two, two, seven, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Miss McQuade?
Yes, sorry.
Um, and secondly, um, the other item under subdivision plans for Veterans Way. Um, again, the developer is continuing to work with DPW to resolve a number of the issues with regards to drainage. He's anxious to get going, but as I have indicated to him, you know, I, we, the planning board really needs DPW's approval in order to, to, to review these, this project, so, um, I am asking that the board continue this. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to move forward on this. But there are some significant drainage issues out there that they're trying to work through. So I would just ask that this be continued until the March second meeting as well.
I'll motion to continue.
Thank you.
Second.
So voting to continue the subdivision plan for Veterans Way, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Okay, back to the top. Under public hearings, continue to liquor license. Uh, all alcoholic, all alcoholic liquor license for four twenty-seven White Street, Tucasa Restaurant. Uh, doing business as Tucasa Restaurant Bakery and Bar. Um, just so the, I think I emailed this letter out to the board, but we did receive a, a letter from the Forest Park Civic Association. They met on this particular item and voted to approve. However, their letter indicates that their, their vote to approve is conditional, subject to the modification of the hours of operation. Um, from nine AM to eleven PM Monday through Sunday. I know that the petitioner wanted to stay open till two, but the, the Forest Park Civic Association does not appear to be in favor of that, those hours. So, um, on that note, I'll turn it over to the petitioner.
Okay. Lordes? How are you?
Ahora que no te escucho. Hello.
Hello.
I'm sorry. Hi, I'm fine.
That's good. Um, what do you think about the change in hours?
Uh, I will translate for her.
Go ahead.
Eh, la comunidad de Forest Park envió la carta ya diciendo que ellos aprueban condicionalmente con la condición de que tú muevas el horario de, de lunes a domingo en horario. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Phillips, you say the schedule that they said it was from nine to eleven every day?
Well, that's what the Forest Park Civic Association is recommending. I do want to stress that, that the, the planning board is, is, you know, with regards to hours of operation is only a recommending body. It ultimately is gonna fall to the license commission. But that's what the, that's what the Forest Park Civic Association's letter indicates, that they would be in favor of hours from nine AM to eleven PM.
Okay, entonces la comunidad ellos eh dicen que ellos aprueban eh condicionando a que se modifiquen las horas de nueve de la mañana a once de la noche todos los días, pero que no es obligatorio, no depende exclusivamente de ellos, sino que solo determina la, la asociación de la comisión para eh la aprobación de alcohol.
Entiendo.
Eh, ella te pregunta que si tú estás de acuerdo con, con esa propuesta, la señora, la señora Filippo.
En verdad, yo me gustaría que sea más extendido los fines de semana, pero yo acepto la condición que ellos en conjunto todo me pongan.
She says that she would like to extend the, the schedule during the weekends from Friday to Sunday. But, uh, she agrees whatever you and the commission approves to us.
Okay. All right.
Uh, Phil, was that letter when they said till eleven? Was that including the weekend?
Um, I'm pretty sure it said.
Yeah, night, Monday through Sunday.
Yeah, Monday through Sunday.
That seems kind of early to me if you, you know, but.
Well, would you have a recommendation, Marty?
You know, at least till midnight or so, you know, if it's a, it's a bar restaurant. So, or, but again, it's according to Phil, it's more up to the license commission, right?
So that's.
Well, you guys can, you guys can certainly make a recommendation, but ultimately it'll be the license commission that, that puts the hours on.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't make a recommendation to stay open till one on Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
What do the board members feel?
Well, what I, what I like to see, what we've been trying to do, and what I've tried, try is midnight is the latest. And I always say that because of these people that go stay a little too late, should go home and tuck the kids in a little bit and watch the kids and get home earlier instead of drinking one, two, three in the morning, and you're driving funny. Midnight, I, I, even though you said eleven, I will go as far as at midnight, uh, seven days a week.
Yeah, I would.
Because there is people that live next door and they're gonna make noise. So how do those people sleep? You know, there's gonna be some trouble there if they stay open too late. I would say as, as from, oh, nine in the morning till twelve is the latest for me. That's what I say. If it's over twelve o'clock, I'm gonna say no. After twelve o'clock. Thank you.
I mean, considering Marty's experience, I would side with, you know, if he's saying one on the weekends, um, you know, I'd, I'd be comfortable supporting that.
The recommendation I know from, from, uh, from Phil, Phil's group was midnight. And that's what's here in the paper. What do people feel about nine to twelve midnight?
I would say yes.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'd have no issue with it.
Okay.
Would, to the petitioners, would, would twelve o'clock help you out a little more? I mean, would that be okay? You comfortable with that?
Si te sientes cómoda con que lo aprueben hasta las doce de la noche. Eh, el horario completo de lunes a viernes, riendo los fines de semana. Uh, you say she feels comfortable every day until twelve or just weekends?
No, every day.
Every day, hasta las doce. A mí en verdad, los días de semana no me interesaría que me aprueben un horario tan tarde porque yo no, no voy a tener restaurant hasta tan tarde los días de semana abierto. She says she's not really interested in opening till late the whole week. It's just the weekends because.
She doesn't, she doesn't have to stay open late, um, Sunday through Thursday till midnight. They're just saying on the weekends, the latest she can stay open is till midnight.
Ella dice.
So you don't have to stay open till midnight.
No, que no tiene que estar abierta en los días de semana, pero que te puedan aprobar toda la semana y que lo máximo en los fines de semana hasta las doce. Y después en un futuro no me lo extenderían como los, el horario que tienen los demás restaurantes los fines de semana. She said if she's, uh, later on, she can, uh, apply to, to extend the, the schedule as the other restaurants in the area for the weekends.
That's something she can discuss with the, uh, liquor commission, but also remember, we make a recommendation to the liquor commission. When you go and speak to the liquor commission, you can say, we've agreed to the twelve, but we really want to go longer than that. It's their final decision. They are the ones who have the final decision.
Ella dice que ellos lo que te van a dar es una recomendación, por eso te están eh pidiendo tu, tu consentimiento, pero que esa decisión no depende de ellos sino de la comisión de alcohol. Pero ellos te van a sugerir eso, por eso te están preguntando. O sea, van a sugerir ese horario para ti.
Dile que está bien, está correcto si eso.
Okay, she's agrees.
All right.
Till midnight.
Gloria, can I add a point of clarification?
Sure, Peter, go ahead.
Um, to, to the licensee, the license commission tries to keep the, uh, our schedule as uniform as possible throughout the week, uh, so that the police know, you know, every night for Tucasa will be midnight, for example. Not, you know, that one is open until eleven, this one's open till twelve, that one's open till one, and on different nights. We try to keep it as simple as possible for the police when they are looking for who's supposed to be open and who's not supposed to be open. And, and what we also try to do with new licensees in the city is step them forward to a later closing time after they have proven that there are no issues with the way they are running their business. So if you're good with a midnight closing, then, uh, through the summer, maybe Memorial Day in the fall in September, you could petition to go to a later opening, say one o'clock. And then if you're successful with that, maybe in the spring, go to two o'clock. We, we do a step forward, which has been very successful with new licensees.
Thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Um, if there are no other questions from the board, I will accept, uh, a motion on this petition.
Do we close the meeting?
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Marty.
All right. I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, you're voting to close the public hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
All right. Is there a, a motion on this petition? I, I am, I move to make, to approve it with the following conditions. The hours of operation shall be no later than twelve AM. There shall be no banners, streamers, or other promotional materials located on the exterior of the building with the exception of a grand opening, and all signage will be properly permitted through the building department. Is there a second? Thank you.
So voting to approve the liquor license for four twenty-seven White Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Motion's approved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Participating in your restaurant.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. We wait to, to see you there.
Phil, would you do the next?
Yeah, under, uh, public hearings continued, a liquor license new for two fifty-four Worthington Street, Funny Bunny Inc., um, just to let the board know, I have, I have not received any additional testimony either for or against.
Does the board have any other, uh, additional questions? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
I will accept a motion on this petition.
I would like to make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the all alcoholic license with, uh, the following conditions. One, the hours of operation shall be stated by the petitioner. Two, any and all signs shall be properly permitted prior to installation. Three, there shall be no banners, streamers, or other promotional material located on the exterior of the building with expectation of a grand opening sign.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting to approve the liquor license for two fifty-four Worthington Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Okay, under the next continued hearing, an all alcoholic liquor license for one thousand Hall of Fame Way. Uh, doing business as the place to be. Again, I, I have not received any additional testimony on this particular item either for or against.
Does the board have any additional comments or questions? If not, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Take a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the license or the recommendation with the following conditions. The hour of operations shall be stated by the petitioner. There shall be no banners, streamers, or pennants located on the exterior of the building with the exception of a grand opening event.
Second.
Phil, if you do.
Voting to approve the liquor license for one thousand Hall of Fame Way, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Uh, next item is for a all alcoholic liquor license for seven seventy Bay Street, uh, doing business as Alabante. Um, just so, so the board is aware, um, I did re, we did receive, and I think I emailed it out, uh, a letter from the Bay Area Neighborhood Council, uh, they, they are, they voted to support the liquor license. Other than that, I, I have not received any additional testimony either for or against.
Well, I know we talked about it. What was the final decision on the time? They, they were asking for about two o'clock?
That was our, that was our request. Um, and when they were in front of the neighborhood council, they did support that and sent a letter in support of it. Um, we've also given that presentation to the liquor board. Um, they are an existing restaurant. Um, and, uh, they have some experience up there. They have some experienced people up there. It's not a really big place. The, the total max, I believe, is being fifty or sixty, I can see, depending on what their new layout is gonna look like. As, and I'm sure you're familiar with the, the neighborhood. Um, if you go through the intersection of Tapley Street, there are a few houses down on the left-hand side. Other than that, the neighborhood is across three is one park and behind them is a trucking company. So I don't, I don't anticipate it being a significant issue, and they would counsel us to support it, so I'd ask you to consider supporting it as well.
Okay.
Um, if there are no other, uh, questions from the board, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
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 Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
And I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. That the hours of operation shall be as requested by the petitioner. There shall be no banner, streamers, or other promotional material located on the exterior of the building with the exception of a grand opening, and all signage shall be properly permitted through the building department.
Is there a second?
Second.
So voting to approve the liquor license for seven seventy Bay Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Moran?
Yes.
Miss Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is zone change number three, two, two, five for seven ninety-seven Berkshire Avenue and rear Berkshire Avenue. Um, before I turn it over to the petitioner, I just wanted to give a quick, uh, rundown of the, of the zone change. As I was, this, this is actually the second hearing for this particular item, but the first hearing was held back, I believe, in September of two thousand and twenty-one, so it's been on the agenda for a while. I did just wanna let people know that the, the proposed zone change from business A to business B is specifically being requested to allow for the relocation of a, a truck plow service slash sales operation that's currently located on Bay Street. The owner of the property is, is looking to move that to, uh, Berkshire Avenue. Um, I, I know I have sent a couple emails out to the board over the last couple months, um, in, from some, uh, from the abutters indicating some concerns. I, I do want to stress to the board that the concerns raised by the abutters, specifically one abutter, does tend to be more directed toward the uses that are existing today. Um, as opposed to the proposed zone change, because again, I need to be clear that the, the existing uses today, and, and in order to address the concerns that were raised by the abutters, we, we've had a number of meetings. We actually had a meeting with the abutter and also the city councillor for that area, councillor Zada Kovan. I've also had a number of meetings with code enforcement, Mike Giacomo specifically with regards to the existing uses. Mike has been out to the site a number of times. He's also reviewed the permits for this particular location. And from the information that he has been able to gather, it, this, this site has been a trucking slash contractor shop dating back to the nineteen fifties. So it's actually a, you, it's actually considered, the existing use is actually considered to be a pre-existing non-conforming use. As I've indicated, Mike's been out to the site. The only issue that he saw when he visited was there were some unregistered vehicles on the site that he's indicated the owner needed to remove. But as far as the operations that currently existing there, um, it, it is considered to be a pre-existing use. So the, the uses are allowed. So, um, I know the neighbor has indicated that he believes that the non-conforming use had stopped for a number of years, but the, the city has not been able to find any documentation to, to confirm that. So the, so the pre-existing use, as long as it stays in operation, can continue. Um, if it stops for over two years, then it does trigger the need for a special permit. But there is no indication that this, this trucking slash contract contractor shop has stopped. Um, there was also, um, issues raised with regards to wetlands. Um, those, you know, a number of the concerns raised were really fell outside the side of zoning, but the owner has submitted, uh, uh, I think it's called a, request for determination of applicability from the Conservation Commission. I received an email from Kevin Chaffee, who's the Natural Resource Management, uh, manager. Um, this was heard at the Conservation Commission. It specifically revolves around work, which includes minor grading to direct surface runoff from the way from the pond and installation of tire stop curbing to, uh, restrict access around the wetlands. Um, they, they reviewed the plan submitted and do not have issues with it. It has not been formally voted on. But, um, again, they're doing the two-phase process as well, but they, Kevin has indicated to me that they're, they're, they will fully approve this at their next meeting. Um, I've also, yesterday, Kevin had a conversation with the Department of Environmental Protection. Um, the, the abutter has indicated, you know, when he started talking about some of the issues with the wetlands, he indicated he was gonna contact them. I, I certainly told him he had every right to do that. Um, in the conversations with DEP, it has been indicated to, to Kevin that they have not found any violations. Um, so at the end of the day, I believe, you know, again, I, I understand the, the abutters' concerns. But with regards to the zone change itself, a, a lot of the, the objections to the raise don't necessarily address to the, to the specific zone change. So I just wanted to, to, to bring the board up to speed on that, and I'll certainly turn it over to Mr. Martone if you want.
Mr. Martone? Would you like to add anything?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to add a, a few comments. Uh, the zone change is really for retail sales. Um, in the showroom of the building. That's what we're looking for. Uh, we fall under the classification as automobile repair, although we are not repairing automobiles. We are servicing a snowplow equipment device, but it does fall under automotive repair. So it would need to go to, uh, business B versus business A, which we're zone now. Um, all the continuing uses that Phil talked about in, you know, on the property. He is exactly, uh, this is stating the same things that I found, that we are a continuing use. It has not stopped. I know, uh, one of the abutters said it stopped. It has not stopped. When I purchased the property from the city of Springfield, the previous owner was occupying the property. We had to wait for them to clear out. Then I occupied the property and started trucking the same thing in, on that property. So the use hasn't stopped. And as far as the wetlands in the back, I took that upon myself to, uh, address any concerns that were there. Um, I know I met with Kevin Chaffee. I talked to him about it and made some recommendations of things that I could do. He said submit a plan, and I took it upon myself to act to conserve the wetlands in the back to keep our continued use the same, but also protect anything so it wouldn't, uh, cause any harm to the environment. Um, one of the abutters had called the DEP. DEP showed up unannounced. I let them walk the yard. I told them they could look at anything they want. They did. They didn't come back with any violations. Um, I'm pretty sure that conservation was out there at one period. Um, I'm not sure exactly when, but they didn't seem to have any problems with it. But we're really talking about business B in retail sales, not talking about continued use. But I'm doing everything in my part to comply with any agencies, code enforcement, conservation, DEP. And so far, we've complied a hundred percent, haven't had any issues. Um, the issue that we had with the two unregistered vehicles, originally I wanted to go for industrial A. And the neighbors flipped out, said, oh, my God, you're gonna have some type of massive factory there. I said, no, I'm not. The reason why I wanted A is in the city of Springfield, you have thirty days to have a unregistered vehicle parked on your property. I'm not looking to dismantle vehicles, but sometimes there are some instances where customers' vehicle might have to stay for two months. It might not be registered. It could be brand new. It could be used. But it is on the property waiting for an outfit, waiting for parts, whatever the case might be, the way things are today with, um, supply chain issues and things like that. Industrial A would have been a better fit for me, but the neighbors came back and said we would support business. Industrial A would have been a better fit for me, but the neighbors came back and said, we would support business B. Could you do your job in business B? I spoke with planning uh, with Phil, and we come up with a scenario that we believe we could do my business uh, without any problems, except for past the thirty days on a vehicle that's not registered. So that's something I have to deal with. I really wanted industrial A, but I settled for business B. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me. I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any other, or are there any questions from the board?
No questions, but I know the environmental was a big issue that we talked about. So I'm very happy to see that Kevin was involved in DEP and uh, it gives me a much more comfortable sense. Thank you. Thank you for the due diligence.
My pleasure.
If there are no other questions from the board, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Voting to close the public hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
The hearing is closed.
Um, I will accept a motion on this petition from the board.
Yeah, I'll I'll make the motion. I'll I'll make the motion to um, for the zone change from business A to business B for seven ninety seven Berkshire Avenue.
Second.
Okay, voting to approve the proposed zone change for seven ninety seven Berkshire Avenue, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion's approved. This will now go to the city council, I believe, on the second day.
All right. Thank you for your indulgence, Michael. We appreciate it.
Thank you. It was a pleasure working with everyone, and thank you for your support. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, under the one of the last continued item is for a zone change for number three two two eight for fifty-three Wilberham Road and forty-two Waltham Avenue. Just for the board is aware, I have not received any additional testimony either for or against.
Either the, do any of the board members have any questions? Hearing none. I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve this zone change.
Second.
Voting to approve zone change number three two two eight, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion's approved, and again, this will be heard at the city council at the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and finally, under public hearings new, a all alcoholic liquor license new, location three fifty-seven Cottage Street, petitioner Lou's Cruise, doing business as Kay's Cake, Kay's Cakes and Banquet Hall.
Who is going to speak regarding this petition?
I can, if I'm the manager of record for the for the business.
You can just give your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Philip Anthony Boris. I reside six Elaine Circle, Springfield, Mass, zero one one zero nine.
Could you tell us a little bit about your petition, about what you're requesting?
Yes, so we we uh, what we like to open is a banquet hall. Um, so Lou's Cruise has had a, she's been baking cakes in in Springfield for over thirteen years. This will be her fourth location. She had three uh, brick and mortar locations, including uh, downtown Springfield, Indian Orchard, and most recently at the Eastfield Mall. And uh, many of her clients' uh, biggest issue was finding a great venue to have their events at. Um, and she's baking their cakes and doing their treats and doing decorations, but they didn't have any great venues to use. So she came across the opportunity to open up a banquet hall and be able to provide that service as well for her her clients. Uh, I myself have am a stand-up comedian. I own a a fundraising company called Funny for Funds. And I do fundraisers for all types of private organizations and nonprofits and teams, and I've been doing that with uh, Funny for Funds for about six, six to eight years now. And we've raised over six point five million dollars for all types of uh, causes. And we plan to use the the banquet hall for fundraisers as well.
And who will be uh, the bartender?
Uh, so I'm gonna be the manager of record, and I have a staff of bartenders I used to work with in the past that are all tips certified. And I'll be hiring them on a event-by-event basis. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll be I'll be hiring them based on the events, because not all of our events are are gonna require alcohol. We just wanna have the alcohol license. It's in a case where it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have. Uh, so we don't intend to provide it for every event. We do, we do not wanna be in the bar business, so it's not gonna be a location that's open every day. Uh, it's only open for when someone actually rents the space during their time period.
And because you have to have food with alcohol, if I'm correct, no, Peter?
They're applying for a general on-premise license, which doesn't require service of food.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but most of most of our events will be catered. If you know, most parties are catered, and it's gonna be outside catering.
Okay. And Lou's, are you gonna be selling cakes there?
You're on mute. You're on mute, Lou's.
That's okay. We do it all the time.
Yeah. So she has a residential license, okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
I have a residential license. I had a commercial license, but um, since I closed down at the Eastfield Mall, I only have a residential license. So if someone needs me to bake a cake for them, then I would be doing it out of my house. I don't have, I wouldn't be baking or anything there.
Okay, all right.
So, just a couple of questions. So you're not gonna be doing the actual catering. It'll be outside catering. You'll just rent out the space?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And the places you've had open, are they bakery-type places?
Yes.
But that, but you're not used to catering. You're not gonna be doing that? Have you, okay. Have you managed anything like this before, or is this a new venture for you?
Um, responsibly, this would be the first for me. I do, I've had um, events where people kind of hire me to decorate for them, just kind of do like balloon designs and and setting up their tables and all that stuff. I've done that, but not my own space. I've gone to other banquet halls or other venues to do it.
And and I I was the manager of record for the International Beer Garden sixteen hundred Main Street for about five years.
So that was my next question for your history. Okay. So you've managed bars and stuff before?
Yeah.
This is the old limelight?
Yes.
Yes.
If I under.
And there's no more physical bar in there. And it was the first thing we did was remove the bar. To empty space now.
So it it's only gonna be open when there's a a function, when you're having a fundraising thing? And what?
Correct. Fundraising, birthday party. Uh, we do have a a networking group that's looking to meet there in the mornings and just like a, it's an hour and a half networking meeting that they do. So we we're just, you know, be able to rent it off for different things.
But typically on uh, weeknights, it's probably closed?
Correct.
Yes.
Most weeknights.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's. It's in the industrial park, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'm right on.
Now, it's it's two floors.
Yes.
Correct.
Could you potentially be renting out both floors at the same time?
Uh, not for two different parties.
Not for different parties. So if the person, if you're gonna rent it for that evening, then you have the, you know, the opportunity to just use the first floor or both, but not two separate events.
Okay, and um, how about security?
As needed, um, you know, again, I I I still have a contacts with a lot of the uh, local area bouncers and that kind of stuff. Um, if we need it, we'll have it.
Okay.
And I'm and I'm a mentor for one of Springfield's finest, so uh, um, I can always get get connected with uh, someone from SMD, S S P D.
Okay. Do board members have any other questions?
Not really.
Nope. Okay. Um, if there are no further questions and um, the petitioners have no further um, comments they'd like to make, I will uh, recommend that we continue this hearing.
Somebody like to continue.
Thank you.
I hope to continue the hearing.
Second.
Okay, uh, voting to continue the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
So this will be continued until March. I believe it's March second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Okay, just quickly, I I just have um, two non-subdivision plans that I just wanted to bring up here real quick. Can you, that on everybody's screen?
Yes.
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 So this is just a, this is a parcel up in Indian Orchard. It currently is an existing building and then a vacant lot here. They're just removing the lot lines and making this one larger parcel.
Move to approve.
Second.
On favor?
I.
I.
And then, uh, lastly, hold on one sec, um. This is a parcel up on Newbury Street. It is currently three parcels with a house and two vacant lots. Uh, the house is just moving the lot line to provide, it's it's basically going from three parcels to two. So they're they're making the parcel with the house a little bigger, and they're making the the, they're turning the, they're making the the vacant lot a little larger. I think they they wanna sell it for a building lot, so um, so it's basically a three, three lots getting re-subdivided into two.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Okay, so that's uh, that is it.
All right.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
All right. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Do I move to close?
Oh, yeah. Adding these little things.
A move to close the hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
I have a nice night.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.